The United States of America, your republic which is safe, well, nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for starters, I would just like to have a small discussion about visitor comments. It's the first thing on the agenda. Every topic is given five minutes. If someone has something to say, whether it be on the agenda or not on the agenda, this is when you speak. So when I call visitor comments and nobody says anything, and then we get into the agenda, and we're trying to have a board conversation about something, and now we've got six hands that are rising, and it gets very convoluted, and people start talking over one another, I don't want that to happen. Okay? So this is when, if you have something you'd like to say about the meeting, about what's on the agenda, this is when I ask you to raise your hand so that you can have your five minutes. Okay? All right. Visitor comments with that being said. Yeah, yeah. Erin?
Yes, hi, my name is Erin Wayne, I'm the current head of school, Eagle Hill School. And so I'm here today, obviously, I learned about the pilot agreement that was being proposed two weeks ago, which I was certainly concerned that we were not brought in as a partner to discuss if something was going to be looked at as a change. Eagle Hill itself is already in a signed arrangement with the town, and has been for an assigned arrangement for the last 10 years. And I think that we, you know, that was entered into in good faith by both parties, and to be considering something that would be adverse to that would be rendering that void. And again, if that was to take place, I would think that we would be working in partnership and having a discussion. What you're raising right now is financially not even possible for Eagle Hill. And again, I think in partnership, it should be a discussion between parties, and not something that's just happening on the board without talking to the entities in town.
Thank you, Erin. So the purpose of us discussing this is to come up with a plan. And it's by no means not to include anyone. Of course, if we were to move forward with this, it would be individually spoken to with each entity that we thought, you know, that this fell into their, being tax exempt.
Right. It didn't feel that way last week when a vote was being called for.
No vote was called for last week. There was, it was discussion.
It was discussion, and then I believe that Mr. Tinker was asking for a vote, and then there was discussion between the two of you around that you didn't want to vote, and I think his words were dragging your feet on the vote.
No, okay, we're not gonna, we're not gonna talk over.
Maybe I misunderstood what I saw.
Yeah, no, we're still discussing this, we still, obviously, again, if, if, this is a policy, the board sets policies. But again, if we were gonna go forward with this and vote on it, then it would be individual discussions with each entity. And one of the first paragraphs says that it's voluntary.
Madam Chair, may I add to that? I believe, in curbing from wrong, but the intent is also to honor whatever pilots are already in place.
Yes, yeah, so, yeah, 100%. And I do know that you have a couple of pilots, and we want to work as good neighbors.
Right, I mean, since you do have two pilots in place.
This is not, yep, yep. So that, that in itself, you're already into. So we're not looking to recreate the wheel, or, you know, rock the boat, per se. That's not, that's not the intention. There's other entities in town that, you know, maybe we need to look at. So it's just, it's something that we're considering moving forward on. I hope that helps. Okay. Yes.
So this is on another subject, my name's Nate Goddard, I'm a resident here in Hardwick. In this regards, the conservation restrictions, that was discussed in the last meeting. You know, I'm here just to, you know, provide some support for the land trust, and it seemed like there was some, you know, conversation that the land trust may be a little bit of a suck on revenue, potential revenue from the town. And I think that's not the right way to look at it. You know, my kids, my family regularly use the rail trail. My daughter has learned to ride her bike on the rail trail, you know, so I mean, it's not important, I mean, it's important to not look at the land trust as just some financial, I guess, a, you know, drain on potential tax revenues. And the fact of the matter is, a lot of the land trust properties are already in Chapter 61 program. So whatever tax revenues you think about getting, it's minimal, honestly. But, I mean, so, I'm just here to support, you know, the land trust and say, hey, you did a wonderful job with the trails, we enjoy the trails, and I think it's very wrong to look at that and say it's a financial drain of, you know, some services on the town.
Thank you for your comment. We appreciate you coming. Does anyone else have, I, for those of you that just entered, this is the time to make a visitor comment. Whether it's something on the agenda or not, obviously, personnel or town employees cannot be discussed in a meeting as such, but this is when I want you to raise your hand, have your comment. Once we get into the agenda, that really should be for the board to be able to, you know, have some discussions without 500 hands going up, and then everyone talking over one another. I don't want to see that happen again. Does anyone else have, Bill?
Thank you. In respect to two things that are on the agenda, the first is, as has been discussed, the pilot consideration. You had indicated that different boards, board members were requested to provide input, but boards themselves have not been yet. What I, what I had sent a few minutes too late, so it wasn't in your packet apparently, was just this message, and if I could read it quick, I'd like to. It was, "My thoughts briefly as a citizen. The town would do well to consider requesting pilot contributions or outright gifts from nonprofits in town. These are by law voluntary, but many municipalities have succeeded in negotiating them. Last I read, there were 82 in Massachusetts. Massachusetts has far more than any other state. There should be input from many in town on the subject, not just the select board, planning, capital, planning, conservation, assessors. Would this just be a policy matter, as I think you suggested, or a general bylaw? This might best be studied by a task force or subcommittee. We need an inventory of all nonprofits, an approximation of property values exempted, contributions to town, including current or past pilot payments or gifts, number of employees, and cost of services to town. Any formula for assessing," it's in quotes, "contributions should be based on property values, likely with a threshold for total value of exempted property value, perhaps $500,000. Basing a suggested pilot contribution on, quote, gross revenue, end quote, makes little sense to me, as it does not correlate with cost of services or property tax revenue loss, and it unfairly includes revenue earned by a nonprofit in other municipalities, or received by donors outside of Hardwick, or projects outside of Hardwick. We need to fully understand the cost of services to the town for various types of properties. That is, what does undeveloped land cost the town in services? Farmland, commercial and industrial development, single-family housing, multifamily housing? What is the lost, so-called lost tax revenue from land put under conservation restriction? Especially for land that is already, or would otherwise be put into Chapter 61 A or B? What is the lost tax revenue for single-family housing built by nonprofits? I don't think Hardwick allowing landowners to grant CRs to nonprofits should be any part of a pilot discussion, as it seems to have been recently. I don't think Hardwick allowing landowners to grant, no. Development of parcels owned by nonprofits, and especially newly purchased parcels for expansion, have often not involved planning board review or approval, or that of the building inspector in some cases. I believe this ought to be addressed. Thank you."
Thank you. Cheryl?
Just one comment, as we think of all these things which may slow or change how nonprofits work in the town, or give up in the town, that during the 50-odd years I've lived here, there have been three or four economic studies done of the town, three by UMass, that I was more into than the later one. And they all said that the best bet for Massachusetts, for this part of Massachusetts is ecotourism. And we have had growth, I think, every year, if you look, and it's a small growth, but a growth every year, in the people that are coming out here to bike the trails, to, you know, fish, to do the, and they eat in town, they stay, hopefully they'll stay in town. So I think you have to think of what is going to bring more people to the town to spend money. And I think that sometimes the short-term revenue is going to be lost over long-term gains that we would make.
Thank you, Cheryl.
I don't know if the meeting's being recorded.
Eric?
Couple of comments. One, it's viewer meeting, you can run this as you want, but I find this format really awkward. Because the problem is, as you go through the agenda, and you come to, let's say, the pilot or the auction process, there might be parts of your discussions that could trigger questions and concerns from others. But it seems like, at that point, we're not allowed to make those points.
Right, because at the last meeting, everyone was talking over everybody else, and it was, yeah, I, this is when visitors can comment, is at the beginning of the meeting.
Madam Chair, may I add something?
Sure.
If anyone does have any questions, you know, they can come, obviously, email me or come by, I answered a bunch of questions today, so that's always an option too.
Okay, but one problem with that is if they move to vote on a particular issue, it's too late. That's, that's the one comment. The second comment is, I would hope that the chair of the Capitol Planning Committee might address the auction question. Mr. Corzat. Wake up.
I thought that was on the agenda.
Well, it is, but the problem is, we're not allowed to talk about it.
So at the last meeting, everyone was talking over everybody, I had, people in the crowd were asking other people to speak, and the first line on the agenda is visitor comments. That is when you can talk about anything on the agenda or not on the agenda. That's what was, that's what was addressed, at the beginning of the meeting.
But Kelly, if the meeting is a process, and the selectmen are conversing about the issues.
And then everybody else chimes in, Liz, we can't have a conversation.
I understand what you're saying.
And then the meeting tends to get out of control.
But...
And I'm trying to reel it back in.
May I just continue?
Sure.
You are, as selectmen, having a conversation with each other, and that is the meeting. But in the process of that conversation, points come up that people need clarification on, or that people have not understood was part of what the discussion was about. And I don't understand, as our selectman, how it is useful for you to gather information, you know, to require us not to ask questions during meetings. I understand what you're saying about the way a conversation can get out of hand. And so asking people to be thoughtful of each other and of you is perfectly fine, but I just do not understand the process.
Well, we're gonna try it this way. Thank you.
As long as big decisions don't get made without anyone having a right to ask a question.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Eric?
I disagree completely with this. When I ran a meeting, I would recognize someone, and people could speak when they were recognized, and not allowed to talk back and forth to each other. But if we're not going to get the viewpoints from these people, we're not doing our job. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are other towns, like, is how the meetings are run, is they, the public has the opportunity to speak when it's appropriate on the agenda.
There's other towns that don't allow visitor comments at all. It's all over the place. So after the last meeting, I thought long and hard about how to address everybody talking over one another, just, you know, it just, there's gotta be some control of it. So I'm trying this way.
We run the Conservation Commission differently. When we have a topic that comes up, there's a public hearing, we listen to the stakeholders, people have questions. I agree with Eric, both Erics, that I think this is very awkward, because we should be able to ask questions, it should be respectful. And I've been in meetings where things have gotten out of hand, and it's not good. But people in the room, as chair, you can say, I'm talking, or you can't talk, you know, permission is through the chair. But people need to be respectful for that.
And that didn't happen at the last meeting.
Okay, well, maybe we should try it, because people in this room are interested in hearing what is going to be said tonight, and what decision is going to be made. And I think we have a right, as a resident, to ask a question, and get an answer to it, and have some, perhaps there's feedback that maybe the three of you haven't thought about, that have come from this group of people that are in this room, that like, oh, that's a good point. You know, I just think that it is an awkward situation, that you would just have, you know, discussion, and then are there questions? And limit it then.
That's fine, and I'm willing to try it again, but I'm telling you what, if it gets out of control again, I'm shutting it all down. Fair enough? I asked, like, it just, it was too much. From everybody in the room. Anybody else have a visitor comment? Ian?
Yes, can you check the lights around the Hardwick comment? It seems very dark up there, maybe some of them have gone out that should be on at the intersection.
Like, streetlights?
Yes, yes. I don't know which ones should be on.
It just seems dark.
Exactly, at the intersection.
So I have to be up there tomorrow after it gets dark, so I'll do a drive around, and I'll see which ones are out, and then I'll make sure we get to drive.
They were purposely, some turned off years ago.
Okay.
And so it doesn't have a lot of light, anyway, but, you know...
Seems darker than, than normal.
Yes.
So tomorrow I'll take a drive, and then I'll get back to you.
Okay.
We should talk to you about that.
Anyone else? Hey, join me in the Finance Committee. Budget process update and expectations.
So you just have to open your meeting?
Yep.
What time is it? 6:40. Calling in order. What time is it, 6:48?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, we're in session.
So I have an email I'm gonna pass out, that both chairs have seen, and I thought, after talking to Chris on Friday, that it might be useful to have for this discussion. I called the FY26 budget busters, but I did not make that phrase up, that was from my former boss.
Okay, so, I will start, just by saying, I really wanted to have this meeting of the board with finance, because last year that didn't happen. So we don't want that to happen again, because we're both in agree to that. I don't think we saw the budget as a board until late April or May, so, just want to be on the same page, just want to know what's going on. You know, at the end of the day, it's our budget to present to the town during town meeting, and, you know, we don't want to be scrambling at the 12th hour like, like we did previously. I know Justine has mentioned working on, like, folders for us, and, you know, as she's working with you guys to put the numbers together, like, we're all gonna be updated, so that I do appreciate.
Do you mind if I just touch on that real quick?
Yeah, ahead.
So I sent, I worked with the town accountant on budget sheets for every department. All departments have their budget sheets. I'm meeting with departments the week of December 16th to go over their budgets, and then my assistant and myself are putting together binders, so all of your committee will have binders of the budget, and so will the select board, so you all will have the same information. You'll have their request, you'll have my recommendation, and then there'll be a column for your, and the select board's final approval.
Yep.
Yeah.
Agreed.
And I can assure you, as long as I'm at Hardwick, you will not first get the budget in April.
That'd be right.
Yes, okay.
Do you guys have anything you want to throw at us? Right off the bat?
Yeah, I sort of think a couple of, I guess, budget objectives this year would be, we want to, we're gonna fund stabilization to the 5% mark. So that gets us to the first milestone, getting stabilization back to 5% of the budget. And then we really need to look at funding capital with as much as possible. Remember, this is gonna be, this is a multi-year process to get right the wrongs of the previous years of probably not the best budgeting.
Being able to save the process.
So we need, still need to take baby steps. Having a very, a very lean budget's gonna be very, very important. So, you know, like we talked about, the personnel, we need to look at, spend, spend some time looking at personnel and pay, pay rates, because that's, we're certainly under the market, so we'll see how we're gonna fund that. But really look at how we can squeeze everything out of the budget to produce free cash to fund capital. That's, that's gonna be the main objective for the next several years, I think.
So anyone have, anything they want to ask, or anything at this point, question wise, or?
The Board of Health, 7,000 possible statements, what is that number?
So that number, I have to work with the Board of Health Chair on, that is because the House agent has been paid for out of the revolving fund, so the $7,000 that was appropriated in this budget, nothing's been spent out of it this year.
So these are just some things that, that just being put together as, you know, kind of thinkers to what could help or...
And it's just educated guesses at this point, like, it's stuff that's maybe been talked about.
Just things that caught your eye.
Exactly.
You know, just to, just to start thinking about now.
Doesn't mean that this is all...
As we move into the, yeah.
Yeah, and you have the Quammen Health District listed here for 35,000. We, we don't come anywhere near that in services.
So again, that's just a hold to be aware of. Again, I have to meet with the Board of Health Chair and see where that stands, but for now, it's just something to keep on people's radar.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, it's just radar stuff. The stuff could be coming, the stuff I see down the road, or, I just don't want any surprises for anybody. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
And cost of living increase, what are you shooting for, for that, or is that too early to talk?
I think it's a little too early, however, I did tell departments to plan on 2%, while they're putting together their worksheets, but again, that's subject to change, but I just wanted them to get into the practice of doing it, but I also just wanted to do a little bit of planning as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else from Finance?
No. We're starting earlier this year, which is good, so it's good. I want to thank Justine for all the hard work she's put into prepping this, so thank you.
You guys saw, I'm sure, the new budget spreadsheets that were in your packet, that Justine worked with Lori on, with Ray, Lori Delo.
Yes, she was amazing. I just, I told her my vision and what I wanted, and she was so diligent in working with me, and put in a lot of hours to get this expedited, so.
So that's great. Well, thank you. It's always good, I think, just keep in touch, and...
It's good to get started.
Yeah, definitely good to get started now.
Yeah.
It's not even December yet.
Yeah.
That makes me happy. Perfect.
Just remember, when you're done, you have to close your meeting.
Yeah. Do we want to, you guys want to stay for the selectments?
I'm gonna stay for the select meeting.
All right, we'll close out. There don't need to be anything, anything else, do we?
No, not at this point, no.
All right. You guys take a motion for the Finance Committee, concerns?
Okay, thank you, guys. Parade permit, Christmas on the Common, December 1st, 2024.
So back a couple months ago, when the board had approved Christmas on the Common, there was no talk of a parade, so this is just for clarification, yes, there's going to be a parade starting from the Corzat house down to the Common, around the Common, I met with the event organizer and the police chief, so everyone's on the same page, brought in fire, so everything's good, but again, just for clarity, at the time that this was initially brought to the board, there was no intent of parade, so it's just to be clear.
Okay. Take a motion?
Motion that we support the Christmas on the Common. What's the connect?
The parade parade.
Parade permit for the Christmas on the Common. All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion and vote on parade will renew a new host community agreement, is someone here?
Yes, yep.
Right here.
Should I come up here or...
Sure, please. Yep.
I just want to want to state that in your packet, I put the Cannabis Control Commission's model host agreement, just for the board to be able to review.
Thanks, my name is Phil Silverman, I'm an attorney for Mill Greenery. And just by way of background, my firm is a national cannabis law firm, this is all we do, represent about 150 companies in Massachusetts doing this, so we have some feel for the industry, and I, you know, picked that background that whole day, have some questions come up about what's going on in the industry tonight, and the requirement for a host community agreement, happy to answer those. But I'll just sort of, to illustrate where we are right now, I just want to give you, I'll let the document, there's four of them here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So my client is asking for a new host community agreement, and if you followed sort of the history of what's been going on with the Cannabis Control Commission, you probably realize that it's not a legal term, it's a mess, okay? And it's caused a lot of confusion for local communities around the state, still is. And, and the problem that we have right now is, my client's seeking a renewal of its state license. And in order to get the renewal of the license, the state is saying to them, you need a new host agreement, you need, the old one is not compliant with some laws that were passed in 2022, and so you need a new one. Now, the reality is that there's some question about that, I think the town council would probably disagree with that. And that's fine, you know, we get that. The difficulty, it, it's almost not our fight in some ways, because we're stuck between, if, if that position were to hold for the town, we're stuck between having a commission that won't let us proceed and continue construction on the project, and a town that, you know, wants to view, you know, the law under, and I'm not saying it's an illegitimate point of view that your council, I happen to disagree with it, but that's okay. The point is, is where, my client is kind of stuck right now. You know, we've put about $2 million into this project, into that building, there's probably another $2 million to spend there. And my client is sort of in a unique position there, because my client is affiliated with some other companies, which also have retail operations, so he would be using this facility to supply his retail operations. If you don't have that situation, you do not want to be a cultivator in Massachusetts. No cultivation companies are springing up in Massachusetts right now. It's only somebody like this gentleman, Mr. Lang, who is out here, that's in a position to do that. And to be blunt, you know, I represent a lot of companies, there are facilities like this for sale all over the place, where, quite frankly, you could buy him for less than the $2 million that he has to put into this one. But he is committed to this community, and he wants to make this project happen, he likes the building, he, like, he likes the idea of revitalizing that building. And so we're just trying to find a way forward here. And the way forward, hopefully, is to get a new host community agreement. And the way those agreements work now is, it's basically on an annual basis, if you're looking, if you can find fees or costs that have been incurred by the town as a result of my client's operation, you're allowed to send... of my client's operation, you're allowed to send an invoice for those costs, and then we have to take it and submit it to the Cannabis Control Commission, which will look at it and say, either yes, this is fine, you need to pay it, or no, we don't think, you know, it works, we don't think it's going to, you know, okay under the law. So that's what sort of we're looking for under this new agreement, you know, so to allow him to go forward. Because right now, we're in a position, he's done a lot of revitalization of that building. But to go further, we need to get what's called architectural review by the Cannabis Control Commission. They need to approve our architectural plans, or we're not allowed to build any further. And they're not going to do it unless we renew this license and have a compliant host community agreement. So that's kind of where we are, and hoping that we can sort of go about, the model HCA is typically used, although your council may have a few tweets here and there that she would want to make, which is fine, you know, I've worked with your council on probably 15 or 20 of these around the state. So that's kind of where we are, and happy to take any questions you might have about it.
Go ahead.
What's the major difference between what you're asking for and what we've signed several years ago?
Yeah. So several years ago, you signed, there was an agreement that had all sorts of different fees in it. A company like this would have had to pay 1.5% of its gross revenues to the town, an additional up to 1.5% of revenues also as a, what's called a community benefit payment, have to make charitable payments, a lot of different payments. Again, I'll, I will, I try to be fair about this. I never thought any of that was legal, okay? And your town council would tell you that it is. But it's, on some level, it's almost irrelevant at this point. No company in the cultivation space can survive having to pay fees like that these days. The price has come way, way down on this commodity, where, you know, for a gentleman like my client, you can make money, because again, you're not wholesaling to anybody else. The wholesale market's dried up. You're doing your own product, and you can cultivate your own product and manufacture product for less than what it takes you to buy from other people. So it makes sense for him. But those kind of fees, you know, they just don't really work in today's industry. So, you know, the difference is those fees, basically.
And really, that's the only difference?
By and large, I mean, there's, you know, little things about the length of, you know, an agreement, it's sure allowed to do four, I think it was five years, now it's eight years. But that's really the sticking point for most municipalities and operators.
I have a question for you on the sales tax. Is it still 3% of all your products that you sell?
So, no, there's not a, there's a 3% sales tax on retail, but not on...
Well, it listed wholesale as well, and wholesale, any manufactured, any type of product that you sell, there was a 3% fee.
I don't believe it was on wholesale. Listen, if that is a part of the law, obviously you can collect it. Nobody's going to argue with you. We're not trying to get out of any obligation that we have along those lines, but I'm pretty sure that if you check that out, it's only going to be on retail sales.
So how would that affect Hardwick in the sense that you're only making the stuff and running it here? And then he has retail stores in other towns that would get that 3%. How would that benefit this town?
That's, listen, unfortunately, that's what the legislature decided, and I hear you. You know, the benefits to this project for the town are, you know, that you're employing people, you can, we can have a hiring preference than we would for local residents, which is not insubstantial, you know, if this can get up and running to the level we think it can. I'm sure the tax base is increased by revitalizing the property, that sort of thing. But it's no longer a situation where it's kind of a revenue source. It's really supposed to be a reimbursement source for costs that you're repairing.
If I could add to that, I'm Agent Farzad Bakr, and I'm consultant for George Lang. I'm from Northampton, Massachusetts. So George is pursuing cultivation, because that's the first stage of this agricultural process. But he does also have the right to have a retail there. So when funds, when he's recruited his funds, the plan is to have a small retail at the front of the building, kind of like the farm stand at the farm. So in that case, there would be retail, and 3% would automatically go to the town as tax.
Okay.
So I'm going to voice my concern, is that when we sat down originally, this was going to be up and running in a year, and we were going to see that up and running in a year. And that has not happened. Can we talk a little bit about that, please?
Yeah. Hi, I'm John, my name is George Lang, I'm the owner on 91 Main Street. When we purchased the building, I never liked that the building had so much problem. Say, for example, we tried to do the water shower, it took almost four months. It cost me like almost like $250,000 to do the water shower, you know? Because the building is, they've been closed for so many years. We have a standard lot of money to fix the demo of the building, do the 21E, those test stuff. So there also we have a problem with the old auto tech, and the design team for, take a long time, for now, how many, three years almost. So we just have a nation grade to meet next month, December, no, December 6th, to meet the nation grade on site to discuss the eventual city, you know? Yeah. I think because mostly is my experience, I never done this business, so we have a lot of mistakes made, you know, for the industrial part, for the electrical, all the farming, all the stuff.
Just so...
I appreciate you being honest.
Yeah, and just so you understand, this is sort of, you know, over the time that I've been doing this, you see this again and again. This is not the most simple type of building to utilize for this. What you generally see is one of these, they're called bobbler buildings, it has aluminum.
Sure, but he knew that buying the property.
No, I understand.
So I just, you know, I'm playing a little bit of devil's advocate here, because I think we thought we'd see something really up and running by now, and we appreciate it. And that's not the case, so...
It costs me so much money trying to fix that building to, up to date, you know? It costs so much money. I just, to fix the roof, it costs almost like $500,000 to fix the roof. It costs so much money.
I can assure you, he wants to get this moving as quickly as he can. It's not in his interest to delay.
If I could add to that, Madam Chair, Dave Velucar.
Yeah, I know you do.
Yeah, yeah. We still can't touch the parking lot. It's been almost two years with the state DEP, because we have claim shrink.
The shrimp.
Okay, stop.
We can't do outside work.
So you're still working on that?
We're doing it. They changed their people three times on us, and it starts all over again. We have a biologist working full-time just getting that done, and we're still, we hope to get it done this winter. But it should have been done a year ago. In fact, it should have been done 18 months ago, and that's stopped a lot. Yeah, it's, this is a very complicated, we had to change many structural issues after we had the structural engineer come through, and that took more time. We had to tear part of the floor up and re-pour the floor. I mean, it's stuff that, it's like remodeling a house. Until you open it up, you don't know what's inside.
No, yeah, no, fair enough. But I had to, I had to ask, so that we all know, like, what's going on.
I know that too. I thought it was easy, you know, to figure out, ah, it costs so much money to...
And the shrimp.
We're all on the same course, because every day he's not producing, he's not making any money. So there's no, there's no benefit to delaying this. It should have been open a long time ago, you're correct. But it's not because...
Right.
And the shrimp have to be relocated, right?
We have found the location for them. We had to send a survey crew out there, the state had approved the location. We have to move the shrimp in boxes about this big, and you got to scoop them up, and you got to put them back, and we had to pay into a fund to monitor the shrimp for a year.
Oh, my God.
Oh, yeah. It's real.
That's taken a year and a half all by yourself.
We were over like an Oscar time, right, so a long ago, you know?
Yeah.
The state asked for like $4,000, $2,000. There was no end still, not, not get done yet, you know?
Suffice it to say, your concern is valid, we understand.
I had to break it up, yeah. I had, I mean, I had to at least ask so that we, you know, understood what was going on. So...
I think I'm lucky, I survived it.
Yeah.
Lucky, actually, the way.
So the Board has a decision. We can do nothing, and then that leaves them to be able to do nothing. We can vote to renegotiate.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah, absolutely.
If this goes through with what you need from us, is the project ready to continue and reach completion, or are you, I know you were waiting for three transformers or something?
No, next, December 6th, we're going to meet the nation grade.
Nation grade, okay.
About where to transform, how be the transformer we need? So then we can, then the rest will be easier, you know? Yeah.
And they have to relocate the shrimp.
Twenty years.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
And it's only...
Twenty years, yeah.
The licensing. Yeah, the licensing from the state perspective, you're just waiting for delays. You have to wait to get on a monthly meeting for them to vote. As you go through, you have to go through two series of inspections in the building. So that alone, from here forward, will be six months of wait time just for processes you're waiting for the state. So he can work in parallel, he can do building and things, but there are certain situations where you're forced to wait 30 days here, two weeks here.
For the relicensing?
Not just relicensing, but second stage of licensing, which is, the first stage is going by license on paper, which he has, renewing that license.
Right, right, that's, yeah.
The second stage is, is like inspections, essentially. Go through your final licensing, and that's right.
And Chair, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So if the Board votes tonight for, you know, us to work on a new post-community agreement and all goes well, when, at this point, do you think you'll be able to open? Obviously, you know, you have to hit some of those benchmarks, but what is the approximate?
It costs, we run smoothly, the construction costs us, who's the, six to eight months? But I don't know how long that'll wait for the state inspection.
It'll be another month or two after that.
Probably more, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, more, you know?
Probably ten months.
Say another year.
Yeah.
Let's say another year to be...
I think that's fair.
Let's give a little buffer.
Yeah, everything runs smooth, you know?
So Chris, do you have any questions, anything?
Really, I mean, if we open negotiations, some in the contract, like some changes with the state, where we could renegotiate whatever agreement we sign, you'd be open to a turn into that, into this contract?
What you might want to do is, like, do a shorter, maybe like an 18-month agreement, something like that, and then we'll see where the law is at that time.
We could do that.
Yeah.
That works.
I think it's crazy to stop.
Well, it's, you know, right.
All right, will we begin negotiations for our new HCA?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So the attorneys will start working together, or they can...
So I'll probably work and draft something before we send it to our attorney, it should just be as, I want to...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I want to, I'll do the first pass of it.
Okay.
Send it to you and Attorney Castanzo, and it's open there.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Okay.
Well, let me get Jen, sorry, I was distracted by the cannabis.
Do we get to send them an invoice for the legal?
There you can do it. If the state approves it, you can reimburse.
Yeah. That means someone keeping track of it all now.
I keep track of all our legal expenses.
We'll just probably wait for that. Is there any update, oh, update to charge of the, okay, that is a different thing, never mind, I was looking at that differently. We're just, Jen and Kelly is zooming in for the next...
I'm in, I don't see you.
For discussion, vote on town action of vacant properties.
Oh, here you are, all right. All right, I'll see you in a second.
She in?
About to be.
Okay.
Morning, morning, yeah. Hi, do you see, can you hear me?
I know.
All right.
Do you want to give an overview, Justine?
Does this work for you guys?
Yeah, that's, that's good, just so... No, you're in.
Um, so overview, you have in your packet, we have been working with the Zico's option group on three of our vacant properties, a little bit of an overview. We have been looking at different options for three of our vacant properties in town that have been remained vacant for a very long time. About 10 years ago, town meeting voted to allow the select board, give them the authority to dispose of the, of the properties as the Board sees in the best interest of the town. So I've worked with Zico's in another town, and actually in two other towns, and they're very familiar with old buildings, and so been working on, been working with the assessor, Jen, working with our building inspector, who had to put together a whole zoning analysis, because two of the properties that we're discussing are in historic zones. So right now, they have all the information that they need. We've been working with their, their attorney, making sure that this has been highly vetted. We had a call about a week ago with the select board chair, myself, Zico's, the attorney, and our assessor, to kind of, where do we go from here, and picking a date that this is going to be, that we can publish it, there would be an open house. They would be doing all the publishing and essential register and the newspaper and everything on behalf of us. The select board would have to sign the deed. They take care of all the tax stuff for us. The reason why this was, this was brought to the forefront is if, you know, a while ago that the town did an RFP for one of the properties and was zero bids, if we go down that road, we'll be required to do an appraisal, which will cost the town money. This way, if we go through a municipal auction company, they get paid when we, when, we do, essentially.
Comes out, the buyer pays.
It comes out of the proceeds of the auction, and so does the attorney pay. So this is no cost to the town. The fear is, is that these buildings are going to be condemned, and then we'll be responsible for taking them down. They've sat vacant for so long, they're on our insurance. We're looking at switching our property in casualty insurance for Point 26. This would be really clean, really clean timing, to get off of our insurance that we're paying for. So we're really in a good spot. A lot of due diligence has gone into this, a lot of time on my part, the assessor and the building inspector, and Zico's, as a matter of fact. The properties are up on their website. So tonight, I'm coming to the Board to really ask them to pick an auction date. I think after the call we had, we were really looking at April, to give people time, if anyone in town is interested in wanting to participate, that they could, and also maybe the weather would be a little bit nicer. Again, we do an open house. I want to make sure that Jen and Kelly have time for input. There's probably a few things I'm missing. Jen, do you want to, do you want to add to what I've discussed?
I think you've just about covered everything. I think it's been a very thorough investigation as far as to our best options to dispose of these buildings. Because authority by the voters were given quite a few years ago, probably, I think, 2013, for the first building, I believe, and then other years for the next two buildings to be disposed of. And I think everything has been done in preparation. We've had the surveys done for each, all three of the buildings, so we know how the land area, and then just the final parts have been, how do we, how do we sell them, or do we sell them, or how do we, or do we designate them to something else? So that's the point we're at right now.
Yeah, I believe you did mention, we've tried RFQs.
Yes, for one of the properties.
Yes.
And another thing is, again, this is way that you let... And another thing is, again, this is way that you let at least cost into the town because it doesn't cost us anything unless you count all the time that's gone into this. But I think the building inspector and the assessor, I don't wanna speak for you, this is the, this is what you also recommend. Jen, moving forward?
Yes.
Could I, could I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
When was the last time any RFPs were put out for any of the buildings? Was it the ten years ago and that's the last?
No, it was sooner than that. I was on the, it was Nicole Parker.
Did, yep, one on the school on Ruggles Hill and Teresa did one for Berry Road, Cleveland.
That's the Page Building.
And when was that?
Teresa, uh...
Five or six years ago.
Yeah, at least.
Yeah, yes.
And then at one point when Nicole was here, she did one for the other building. So it was at least a year, year and a half ago.
So has been any interest in doing that recently, part of your discussion instead of just calling an auction house?
No, because of the very little input and then we'd be also responsible for the appraisal and then we'd also be responsible with going to the attorney general and explaining to them why we're not selling them for their, their appraised value. So there's multiple, it's not just you wanna buy it here, take it. There's multiple steps and that also would cost the town money that we just clearly, right now, we just don't have.
Yes.
We've been talking about this in the capital planning committee.
Mm-hmm.
So there's been a lot of work done there too. And it's not, we actually voted to urge the selectmen to put this on the table, set up another RFP and get the tank out of the ground. I think it's completely, you know, not, I think it's negligent to try to sell a piece of property with a oil tank in the ground.
First of all, if we were to not remove it, because we did allocate funds to remove it.
Town meeting voted towns to remove.
Correct. And if we were not to, that would certainly be a disclaimer in, for the property. I mean, so, I mean, that's, no one's being negligent by not disclosing that. I mean, it, it was voted to move forward with this auction.
By, yes, and we missed that meeting.
So, Mark?
Yeah, just to clarify that, what happened at the capital planning meeting, the last capital planning meeting, we spent a considerable amount of time reviewing this three, three properties that's been on our list since we reformed. So we, we discussed this and then there were three items that we wanted to recommend to the select board. One is to immediately remove the underground tank, only because it's, it's not, it's not negligent. However, it is dangerous to be within that limited area of a public drinking water supply. So to kick it down to April is probably more negligent than dealing with it, which is found and we all know needs to have it removed. So that first recommendation is regardless of what decision you make, you should remove the tank.
Okay.
Number two, this is kinda interesting because I can understand vetting the, the auction house, that makes all the sense in the world. However, what we would like to recommend is that you vet the people that are gonna bid on these things. And that might be by a very simple RFP, being put on all three properties so that you understand instead of what's the best interest of the community being simply a financial number, let's just say bidder one bids twenty thousand dollars and bidder two bids nineteen thousand dollars and bidder one is the high bidder, so in the best interest of the town, the simple decision is to make it because it's a thousand dollars more. However, what, would that be a speculative buy? So that in fact, you, they buy the property for twenty thousand dollars but do nothing, let it continue to deteriorate and then hope for a much better prospective buyer to come along? And that prospective buyer obviously knows the value of that property or bid more to the person that speculated and bought it instead for twenty thousand dollars. So I think, we're not looking, and I, my familiarity with the RFPs that were done, especially in the Page Building, it was, it was so restrictive that no one would bid on it. And in fact, no one did bid on it. So, so the best thing to do is to say, if you wanna bid on this property, either by sale direct or by auction, tell us why you wanna buy it. If you're just speculating on property, you're gonna hold it and the roofs are gonna fall down, the, the properties are all located in, well, two are in a historical district and one is in our, probably the best economic corridor that this community has, which is right here on Route thirty-two in Gilbert. So, so to us, it's, best interest of the town may not be of just a simple financial decision, but it might very well be a combination of what the intended buyer wants to do with the property. So we're only saying that what's in the best interest of the town cannot and should not be solely a financial number. There should be something else to understand what will happen there so that the neighborhoods and the community and of course their tax base gets the maximum benefit out of that. That's your decision, that's our recommendation. Finally, just in a previous report we made to this select board, we recommended that the property that you would best learn your, the ropes of municipal sale of property for this town would be the Ruggles Hill School. And that what you learn from that particular process, whether you sell it or auction it, will, will apply to the other two properties which have very unique aspects to the community or contributions to the community. So that's our recommendation. That was unanimous, well, I was actually surprised that there was, there was any, no discussion against it by the voting members of the capital planning committee.
Can I just address a couple of those items that came up? So because two of them are in historic district, there is, you can't just go in there and put a CBS. Like there are restrictions to what, and that just is...
Of course, that's, it's only, yeah.
Exactly. And I also wanna add, whatever we get from proceeds from the sale, that money goes directly to paying down our debt, which means we can spend more on our, our vast amount of capital needs.
Right, but one last thing. It should go to paying down the debt, but the town voted to turn it to the general treasury. Just in case there's a little difference of opinion between how the town voted and what you're supposed to do by procurement law, I'm not sure who wins on that.
You have to follow Mass General Law.
I understand that, but you also have, read, read the vote by the town. They said specifically to put it into general treasury.
But Mass General Law...
I understand, yeah.
Right. Okay, Warren, the bare language dispose of is really kind of upsetting because, you know, you don't dispose of the historic buildings. If this was Europe, all energy would be going into how do we best utilize those buildings for the community good? And I know we have had RFPs, I think things are quite different since we had a, a fight against the racetrack and I don't, there's some different energy in town. And I would highly recommend that you guys just do another RFP, at least on some of those properties.
I wanna just also...
And how do we pick and choose which ones? You know, like that, these have been, the elephant in the room, hold on please, these properties have been the elephant in the room for years. And we're, we're paying, we're paying just to let them fall down essentially. I, I get it.
I also wanna add, if I may, that Mass General Law requires us to get them appraised if we go that route and that also costs money.
Yeah, right.
How much money?
Thousands of dollars.
Again, is appraisal, to Mark's point, is it the financial benefit to the town or is there a emotional, cultural, spiritual, whatever? You know, it's like tearing down a church, let's tear a church down, but suddenly there's no place to worship. What have we done? We sold it to somebody who tore it down to put a parking lot. What do we do to the, what do we do to the community?
So the historical buildings, I believe, cannot be torn down.
If someone buys it and doesn't do anything for twelve years, it will fall in and next thing it goes somewhere we happy.
That's what's happening now. I mean, I've heard it, Warren, I, I respect it. I've heard everything from, a whole bunch of guys are gonna get together and we're gonna buy it and we're gonna fix it up. That was a decade ago. I mean, I just, you know, and I can't work, I, I can't sit up here and, and come at this from an emotional standpoint. Again, I'm looking at the best, you know, for the town. To not have to pay for these buildings, to not have to continue to insure them, God forbid someone gets hurt in them. Eric?
Couple of things need to be corrected. There was never an RFP for the Ruggles School. There was one for, for the Page and to Mark's point, it was so restrictive, nobody would wanna bid on it. The other thing is, it's in a historic district. It's not in a historic district commission. You could do whatever you want in those buildings by special permit. There's no restriction, you could tear them down.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, just to let you know.
Okay, thank you.
If you're thinking that that historical designation's gonna protect them, you're wrong.
We also have a zoning analysis done by our building inspector that lays out everything that you can and cannot do.
Do you?
Is that projected to the people bidding on it, so they know what they can and cannot?
Yeah, oh yeah, that's information that they will have, yeah.
Yeah, I have one question for Mark. The request for proposal or how you wanna put this into the property on the bidders, how do you, how do you wanna vet these people per se?
I would say that the select board has the sole discretion as to whether it's in the best interest of the community. So if someone says, I'm gonna buy it and I'm gonna sit on it for a couple of years and I'm gonna flip it to somebody at a best price because I can get this at the highest bid and if there's only two bidders, I'm gonna win. And so you have to say, well, just like any, if you're gonna auction it, like any auction, you pre-qualified all your bidders. You have the right to say you can't bid, or you can't bid, or you can't bid because we're making a decision based on the best interest of the community and speculative buying may not be one of them. It may not be you think it is and that's your prerogative. All we're saying is that RFP should just simply say, tell us what you're gonna do once you buy it. Don't put any conditions on it unless there's, on the Page Building, there is this vague six or seven different...
No, they did.
Conditions at the mixters. Even if that was enforced, it may not be and we believe that it doesn't have to be.
Right.
But it did say, the, the vote by the town did say to take that into consideration in whole or in part. So you have a lot of discretion. So that, that's how I would answer your question.
I know the assessor, she has looked into all of that in detail. Jen, do you wanna address any of that or any of the tax stuff or anything?
What, what, I, I, I'm sorry, I missed a, a little bit of the conversation. What was the?
About the mixer?
What was the issue?
The mixer, um...
Covenant.
The, what they want the building to go towards.
The Page, the Page Building and whether or not it has any, you know, stipulation.
It had to go, it had to go back to the mixters for one dollar is what the deed said on that. And all of them, all of them had that. All of, all of the buildings had something in the deed as to what should happen. So actually, the White School, the one in Gilbert though, should go back to George H. Gilbert, I think.
And I thought after so many years that that, that fell off.
Exactly. And the auctioneer looked into all of that, the lawyer looked into all of that. So it's free for us to...
Right.
To do, yes.
That was just only an example, as I was just saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's really not, it's your discretion, but you ought to vet the buyers, the potential buyers should be vetted, far more than, than I think just on their financial capacity to purchase.
I think part of the goal too, and Jen, I don't wanna speak for you, but is to get at least a couple of these buildings back on the tax roll.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, they're just, as far as I'm concerned, they're sitting there, they're deteriorating. Permission has been given to the select board years ago. The voters have made that decision that, you know, the town, they wouldn't be beneficial for the town to own anymore. And so to me, they're just, they're just rotting away and the longer time goes by, that's just gonna continue to happen. And, and then I also worry about any kind of liability would have, we have if anybody got hurt and the insurance that we pay on empty buildings.
Which is a lot higher than when they're, when they...
Exactly, yeah.
Right, so, Bill?
Thank you. Like, Zico's, on their site, the properties are already listed there, right? So we see them there without a date announced. Their process seems to talk about no minimum. So one question is, is there any minimum or might we find out that all three properties have been sold for a dollar or something?
No, so the minimum, so it's ten thousand dollars day of and twenty, uh, sorry, another ten thousand the following day.
Those are deposits, I know, but that's, that, that essentially is a minimum?
Yes.
Okay. The, the, there were some other plans at one point, I guess there've been a lot of plans over all the years, but recently even there was some plans about trying to get some grant money and do something with one building or the other. Has anything more come of that? Is there any, are there any ongoing efforts to do anything for the, you know, to, with local organizations?
Not, it's come across my office.
No, okay.
Unless something can...
Not that, not, not recently, no.
My last thing, thank you, is Mark's idea, I think is good about having some control or vetting of who would own their property, but that doesn't seem to be a normal auction process, does it? If they have the auction, they're gonna sell it to the highest bidder, it says right on their site. These, do your own research, these are gonna be sold as is.
So I will say that we, we had those questions during our initial meeting with them and they do advise not to limit your buyers, like you said, to, you know, limit what can be done with it or, but I, you know, maybe that is a question that we can ask. I'm not, you know, we, we have voted to move forward with this. It's, it's a matter of when at this point.
I'm coming, asking the board to have me move forward and setting up an auction in, in April. Again, would give community members plenty of time if they have, if they're interested. I don't wanna spring anything on anybody, but also to, to clean up a little bit.
Like have it, hopefully be a little bit nicer so that they, the properties look a little bit nicer.
And we'd be able, if we were to sell any of them, we'd be able to recoup the revenue in thirty days.
Yeah, just quick.
So it'd be in this fiscal year.
It would be. Anne?
As in a butter, I'm quite concerned about this. Being too open, you know, could you have a strip club there?
No.
No.
My husband's proposal would be that.
Anne, are you gonna open one?
No, my husband.
Oh my.
Just asking for a friend.
Right, right, yeah. That's probably not allowed on the comment, I'm just saying.
But, you know, I am concerned about going, what's going there and maybe is there time for you to meet with the butters at some point to inform us?
Oh my God, of course, Anne, anytime. Ask me any questions. And I guess that'd be, once everything is moved forward, there, anyone can ask questions of, of the auction company or come to an open house and ask questions. So it's, we're gonna be as transparent as possible.
I'm sure that the man across the street is interested too. He's quite concerned.
Does this have to be put to?
Just remind us of your name again, just for the audio, sorry.
Steve Boyko.
Thank you.
Great, we're pretty much...
Thank you.
So the, the only question I would have is, does this have to go through a, a normal process of public notice?
Yes.
Published in the...
Oh, yeah, yep. Yes, yep. So it all gets advertised, you know, there's, he had like a day's lead and I can't remember exactly.
Yep, it'll be published in the essential register, it will be published in the newspaper twice, one week apart from each other, thirty days published in the essential register. And they take care of all that for us, so.
Yeah, I mean, the big thing is, this isn't costing the town anything. The, the fees all come out of the buyer. So, you know, at some point, we can sit and just look at these buildings forever and not do anything with them or, you know, we decided to move on them. Warren?
Could I recommend that you remove the Page Building from that timeframe? And, cause there is some movement... Because there is some movement, very strong movement, to present something to you guys very soon.
Heard this a decade ago.
This is real?
I really did, like, this is my problem.
Can we start with one?
Could we, I'm just saying, do all three of them have to happen the same day? I mean, it seems, to Mark's point, why don't we learn something from the Ruggles Hill School? And see how it works. You may get $20,000 for that.
Maybe you can get no one to come.
May get no one to come.
Who knows? The point is, we're finally trying to do something with them.
As many people are trying to. Could I ask that you just vote to move that one a little later on, or postpone it?
We'd have to question whether or not they're willing to piecemeal it. I don't know whether...
Oh, the auction company has a deal with all three?
Yeah, for us in Lester, we did five in one day, and they all sold.
So do you have some things?
Yeah, I have a question for the manager.
Lester.
Can we, is it possible we table this for a week, but to meet with this auction company and have a conversation with them? To ask, you know, can we put an RFP on qualifying bidders, or, you know, asking some of these questions and...
That would be a question for the auction company.
That's what I mean.
That's what he's asking.
To meet with the actual auction company, the three, you know, the four of us, you know, have an executive session before our next meeting, if it's possible. I don't know, but...
Can you make a motion?
I'm not making a motion yet, I'm asking, I'm just asking a question.
I don't know what exemption that would qualify for an executive session.
Oh, I don't, well, we just have a discussion, we'll bring them here and have a discussion. It doesn't matter to me, we don't need an executive session.
Or Justine could just ask me these questions.
Yeah, Justine, you could ask these questions, and we table it for one meeting. We bring it back up at December, what is it, 9th? Because that's not going to make a bit of difference if we're selling it in April, or decide to.
I'd like to move that, that we do that, that we kick it down the road for another two weeks.
Just that motion.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to table that.
To December 9th.
Whatever our first meeting in December is.
Well, send me your questions.
Okay.
How long do we have to get in questions?
Few days.
So Mark, do you want to put your email, your questions, as far as qualifying the bidders or...
Excuse me.
All right, sorry.
Charlie.
Have any opinions of value been given about those properties by various realtors?
We do have one.
We also have them assess, I mean, Jen, do you want to speak to that?
Values on the properties.
Well, the values are high. Only because, on the assessed values, we have them high. What we concentrate on as assessors is for taxable properties. That's where we put all our energy into getting the taxable properties that they're right ratio. So we kind of don't inspect exempt properties too frequently. So the auctioneer had already said, you know, at some point, and we will do that in January, to inspect the properties, and actually, the grade and condition will probably change after inspection. So they are assessed pretty high right now.
We did have a real estate agent look at the school, the Ruggles Hill School. Do we, Warren, right, Mace? Yeah, I don't know what that, I don't, I don't believe I've seen it.
I can look into details.
On the Ruggles Hill School, Charlie. I don't know of any other current, not by a real estate.
That was the connection with Nicole, right?
Yes.
When we put, yes.
Excuse me?
Charlie.
Yes, I have one more question. Has anyone pursued an evaluation, or a cost, I should say, to tear the Gilbert Building down? Do you have any idea what that might cost you? And my question comes about as a result of a discussion, which I had with Eric a couple of days ago. And maybe, Eric, you're in a better position to speak about this than I am. But I feel that before it is sold, one might want to determine the cost to take it down, remove the rubble, and maintain that as a town property. Because we don't know what could, what we might want for in the future.
And, you know, all good ideas, again, at a cost, because that building would have to be inspected.
Well, I think the people interested, excuse me, I think the people who might be interested in doing that work would come forth and say, without any cost to the community, it's going to take a dollar to tear that down, or it's going to take $3 million, whatever it is. But before you sell it for a lot less than I believe, people might think it's worth it. I think that that should be considered.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Update charge on healthcare task force. This was updating who should be on it, correct?
Yeah, so after the last meeting, we, the board had talked about taking the planning board off and putting more of a community member, so I changed that, and then I wasn't sure, so I just left it about the finance committee representative, actually, you're here.
If you want a seat at that task force.
Do I have to answer that?
Probably not.
No. It's a little soon-ish.
Hey, a little rate we...
Yeah, we're not meeting, we're not in...
Yeah, so think about, it's, obviously, you know what it is, right? Judy Korsak, working with Bay State and Mary Lane, and looking into all, you know, we don't have a facility out here, and trying to perhaps get one in our area. So, I believe, Neil?
Neil, Halen, Eric Valheim, and Judy Korsak. So far, we need a community member and a member from the finance committee. So if you're okay with the change, who am I just taking a vote in the makeup of the committee?
Do I have to motion? To approve the healthcare task force, and people listed on it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Bill?
I was just wanting to know what, where it stood with the request from Justine to have a planning board person join the task force. The planning board discussed that and voted to ask you to consider instead someone from master planning, from the master plan steering committee, as there was really, we thought, more, you know, more of relevance, you know, to their role in the planning board. We sent back that communication. As far as I know, we hadn't heard anything, and this is the first I've heard about a community member rather than someone from the master plan steering committee. Where does that stand?
I don't remember.
He did bring, and now that you say that, Bill, I apologize.
Master plan?
Yes.
Master plan steering committee.
Instead of the community member.
I thought Judy was very, was like, you know, we need someone who's, you know, in healthcare. That's why, am I mistaken?
I don't know, now I'm confused.
Well, let's find out.
I can ask Judy.
Let's ask her.
We'll reach out to her.
There was, if I may, there's some talk that the master plan steering committee asking Judy to, in fact, join the master plan steering committee, which she had talked about doing.
I'm trying to remember this conversation at another meeting.
She might end up, she might end up being the master plan steering committee's representative of the task force in that role. I don't know, I don't know where that stands.
Well, let's clarify that.
I was wondering what we had heard from you.
Oh, Judy, I'm not quite, I'm not quite sure.
Let's just clarify it. If we have to adjust it, we can do it.
Sure.
At our meeting. Discussion and vote on pivot in lieu of taxes pilot policy.
So I attached in your packets the redline version from council, and then the feedback that I received from conservation and members, members of conservation, members of the planning board. I also have a clean version that I received from Select and Tinker that has the changes from council already. So just pass it out. When am I passing it?
And I'll be very honest, I have not had a chance to look through all the changes or comments from council. When I talked to Justine earlier, my comment to her was to have a working meeting about this.
Select board workshop.
So like, just, this is on the agenda.
Okay.
Like, we just have a working meeting on this.
So just, so you know, a work, a select workshop doesn't have visitor comments on it, and it's just a meeting for the board?
It's just a working, right, it's like, I mean, and we, we have, we have people's comments, and like, that's fine. But in order to sit down and really look at it and pick it apart, so that, and like, line by line, that's what I'm suggesting, so that we can, you know, yay or nay.
If I may, I think we really have to go slow with this. I know the planning board hasn't had a meeting since this was sent to them. So, I mean, there are other, I know Concon has, you know, I think we should go, as you say, line by line. We've got a lot of smart people in this town, we've got to bring them in. This has incredible ramifications, I would like to go slowly and carefully.
Through the chair.
We have, excuse me, do I?
Through the chair.
Yes.
Justine sent this, I don't know if it was you two at all, but we haven't even, as a board, even seen it, so we need some time to type this as well.
Fair enough, like, I, I get it. So let's...
Pick a workshop day?
Yeah, yeah, let's pick a workshop day.
Can we get this posted? We haven't amended it yet.
Anyone that has, wants to see it can email me, and it goes out to them.
Yeah, it's a working document.
Good, I know, I thought, I would have thought so. That has been by legal, never.
Are we, are we, like, are we trying to find something in December?
Christmas.
Sure.
I mean, do we want to discuss any of this right now?
We certainly can, I just, I have not had a chance to look through all the comments yet.
From the council?
Correct, correct.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
I just, I have not had a chance to. I apologize.
No, it's...
Can't get to everything over the weekend.
I get it, I get it.
So I want to look at his comments, or her comments, whoever it is. And then, now look at how you put it together.
Monday the 16th, I'm looking at, it's our off week, and we don't have a meeting if you wanted to do a workshop.
Yeah, I don't, I could do that.
The time works for 5:00 maybe? I'm just suggesting, I'm just throwing things out there.
5:30?
What day were you even talking about?
Monday, December 16th. I can't do the first week of December.
Okay.
I'm, yeah, sorry.
One day to 16th.
I can, that first week. Yeah, I am...
With the holidays, so I have to...
All right, so we have the meeting the 9th?
Right, so we're looking for a non-meeting, like, so that's the only thing that we're concentrating on that night.
All right, so then the 16th works, if you want to...
16.
The 5:30.
16 and 5:30.
Through the chair?
Yeah, sorry.
If this is going to be a working session, is this something that we're going to be free to discuss and be able to collaborate?
It's a workshop for the select board, so the select board will be the ones, and there'd be no comments from the public. It's just a workshop for the board. But any comments or, anything can come through me, and I'll make sure it gets to the board.
If FinCon is a part of, you know, be part of this discussion, be part of this workshop, so it has an impact to the town.
I don't disagree with that.
So you want to do a joint meeting?
Do you want to do a joint meeting?
It would be a joint meeting, not a select board workshop.
I think we have to be open about this, and then we have to bring everybody's opinion into this transparency.
Transparency, you can read it. I mean, it's available. I mean, this board sets policies.
It'd be great to have copies of this at the...
If we wanted everybody to create policy for the town, we vote them in. But that's the role of the select board.
Okay, I think this is a bylaw, so, there you go.
Okay, we're not going to, we're not, this is what we're not going to do, okay? So...
We're not going to discuss this?
Let's do a joint meeting. I agree that input from FinCon would be beneficial. I do also think that input from other departments is important. It's our policy, I understand that, it's our, it's our policy. We've also heard a lot of discussion, and I want to take that into account.
And you can address some of those discussion points tonight.
So let's have that joint meeting, and let's see where we go from there.
Chris, are you okay on the 16th? About 5:30, you got it?
I think we call the finance committee a Christmas party, how's that?
They're having a party?
We're going to call our Christmas party the 16th on Monday.
You're buying, I'm buying, I was for my staff on the 23rd.
What time did you say, 5?
5:30.
5:30. Approval of minutes from October 28th.
So we're tableing this now?
If you have something you want to add, by all means.
All we've asked questions is people here.
I don't have, you know...
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Did you want to do the board?
Oh yes, I'm sorry, I checked it off ahead of me actually saying, oh wow. Discussion on communication between board committees and departments.
So I had sent this out earlier today, it's just a draft, in the form, just ignore the formatting because it's crazy right now, but I just wanted you guys to have something to review. Very preliminary draft.
I think it's a good start, though.
Yeah. And I did, I did send it to Becky, who is kind of working on random things with me lately. Again, ignore the weird formatting, and I'll fix that.
No, I think this is, I think this is a good start. It kind of hits on every department that I think needs to be, you know, yay or nay.
I would ask the board not vote on it tonight, because I want to, I want to work with Becky and then do it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But I just wanted you to see something.
And obviously, it's okay with all the departments that are listed.
Yeah.
They've seen it?
Part of it, they've not seen it all come together.
Okay.
Again, again, they don't want it voted on or anything tonight.
No, so maybe keep working with Becky, and then show it to the appropriate boards that are on here, and see what their thoughts are.
Like, planning has not seen it, but like, Jen had, like, so I still have work to do with that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think it's a good...
It's a good start.
Thank you. Okay, now approval of the minutes. From October 28th.
Now, I recuse myself for the last half hour of that. If you want me to vote, or you want me to abstain.
Did you recuse yourself? Oh yeah, you just, no, that's why you left.
He walked, he left, he left the meeting, yeah, yeah.
I thought I was conflicted, but I wasn't really.
You can, well, you can certainly vote on what you were there for.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
You want that?
Yeah.
We got a highlighter. It's okay.
Take a motion?
Make a motion to approve the October 28th meeting minutes.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Town administrator report?
So today, we had a demonstration of our new phone system.
So, today, we had a demonstration of our new phone system that we're looking at, we looked at three different companies, and I think we're 99.9% sure we found the one we want to go with, it's, you'd be able to, it's 24/7 customer service, any issues, you'd be able to pull up the town of Hardwick and have an app on your phone, so you don't have to use, give out your personal number, it can all go right to your phone, Price is Right, everything's really good, Lieutenant Landin's happy, so we're really close there, which is really exciting, the old barn roof repair is complete, as you know, we had a call with Paul Zeke's attorney, David Capola, town assessor, and the select board chair regarding the auction, repairs were done to the radiator and boiler at town hall, we're just waiting for some parts to come in to fix some of the radiators, we're purchasing panic buttons, unfortunately, we had an incident at town hall, and luckily, Lieutenant Landin and Scott Potter were here when that took place, so only three, we only have three working panic buttons in this building, so we are ordering new ones that aren't connected to the wall, so, safety's really important. I attended a Zoom meeting with Congresswoman at Government's Office in the USDA on options for public safety buildings and public safety equipment, I attended a Zoom meeting with the town accountant and CMRPC on the CDBG grant project on Highland Terrace, budget sheets were sent out to departments, December 16th to 18th, they have their budget meetings with me, the executive assistant, myself, completed a Vadar training, I attended a capital planning committee, I've been working with the assessor who's on the personnel committee on employee salaries, which is ongoing, as you know, we've adjusted the mart drivers' salaries, that is like a reembarrassment for the town, we're working on a job posting now to get more drivers, myself and the sewer superintendent went out to try modular in Littleton and looked at modulators for the sewer project, originally, I was very against it, until we looked at them, that have more of a permit foundation, which was at Selectman Tinker's, is his idea, so I don't love.
I'm pleasantly surprised, though.
I don't hate it, I'll say that.
And the price is ready?
Ish, again, I don't hate it, I attended a lunch with the town administrators from the, some of the Quavon School District towns and a couple other area town administrators, I hosted in Hardwick at Harwick Crossing, we're going to be doing them quarterly, I attended a Teams meeting with the 12 towns around the Quavon Reservoir, and the MWRA regarding an MWRA water study, had my monthly interview on Wear Radio. I want to recognize Laurie Dal Olio, our town accountant, for taking all that time to assemble the new budget templates for the town departments, I have been heavy and hot with my ideas and how to streamline everything and be more transparent, and she really took it and went with it, and I know this year is going to be a trial and error year, because we're starting a new process and a new procedure, so, but I want to thank her immensely for all the work she did assembling those, those templates. Town offices are closed for Thanksgiving, will be closed Wednesday at noon and resuming our regular business hours next week, Christmas on the Common is Sunday, December 1st at 3:00 PM, and the police department toy drive is on Sunday, December 8th from 9:00 to 1:00 at the Sosbury Running Gun Club.
Thank you.
I tried to go really fast.
No, I'm fine, I'm fine. Selectman Roundtable?
I think we should get that oil tank out of there, money was voted by town meeting, I think we're at risk, once it's known we're not in compliance, we should move on that, I don't know why we're still waiting.
Yeah, I don't know.
We were waiting for that call we had with Zeke's to figure out what they recommend, whether we pull it out and risk what is underneath it, again, would be a cost to the town, or if we want to sell it as is, so it was part of that conversation that we had in that Zoom call, so it wasn't off the table, it was just hold on until we figure out what direction we're going in.
I think we should do it, I think we have to do it.
I don't disagree.
What about Wednesday, where you said suck out all the oil out of the tank and then fill it with sand, is that even an option?
I'm going by the recommendation of my fire chief that does this, and that's, his recommendation was to get the thing the heck out of there.
Fire chief's decision.
Okay.
There's two, there's two ways they can do it, I just, he has a sole decision whether to fill it.
Or, right, it can be done either way.
It can be done either way, yeah.
Right, right, so, yeah.
We definitely have him remove it, but again, I just, that cop, we needed to have that meeting.
Yeah, to, yeah, let's, let's get into, let's, Josh, Chief, please, please, and have him maybe start that.
I have an environmental engineer friend who does this, and he's in Ockham, and he's willing to.
Well, have him come over.
Well, I would highly recommend, you know, we need one of those, somebody needs to inspect it within 24 hours.
Maybe put him in touch with.
Please.
Yeah, or vice versa.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
That's it.
Is that everything? Thank you, everybody, for being courteous, thank you, that's my two cents at the end of the meeting.
Move your hands.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And no such.